Welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Work session, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, nine A M. Number one, Carter Lee Building and Grounds Update Bill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just want to go over, I left everyone a copy of my report. Just want to go over some of the items that are on here, bring to your attention some other ones. So, our compliments for the year, completed the rooftop replacement of the jail units for the train system. It's functioning great. We had one hiccup. They were able to finally figure out what it was. They had one cell that whenever it would get below fifteen degrees outside, it'd start bringing in outside air. And it should have been heating, so we worked through that. We got that all taken care of. That was the biggest challenge. Completed the moisture remediation at the animal shelter. It was completed right around April. Implemented a computerized work order facility system. So now all of our work orders are in a database. We attach all costs. We attach all labor. We have a set of our work driving us. We're driving the work. We have a calendar. We know when the filters are due. You know, when all of our equipment is due. And probably by the end of next year, we'll be actually have a database where I can say, this air conditioner is costing us three times the amount of this air conditioner. This one we need to be replaced. So, we're gathering data and we're not just going by our recent memory, right? So, used them all in all my career and bought a very decent system here. Doesn't have all the bells and whistles, but for the amount of money we pay for it, it does a damn good job. Compared to last year, I started March first. It took me the first month to get my feet wet. We had three full-time employees on the day shift, including myself, and by December thirty-first, we completed one thousand two hundred and twenty work orders. I'm sorry, one thousand twenty-two work orders. Year-to-date this year with the new system and only two employees, we're already up to eight hundred and fifty-six. Using the schedule maintenance system, we are able to discover things about our systems. The one that I have listed here, the jail's generator is supposed to run fifteen minutes one time a week. For regulations. Because we were doing walkthroughs and checks, we found out it was running three times a week for forty-five minutes in the coldest part of the year, just driving our natural gas bill through the roof. But we found that our water heater in the courthouse let go just before that last ice storm. Our rounds and inspections found that. We did have water monitoring on the floor, but we found that before there's any significant damage was able to shut it off and get it replaced. We completed the security enhancement project for the administrative office, included electrical upgrades, removing walls and replacing of carpet. We supported the state-required maintenance procedures and repairs for the juvenile detention center to avert fines and further state punitive actions. We found all the, they had a new inspector over there, found all kinds of holes in the firewalls. Found out the generator wasn't on a maintenance program, so I implemented all that. Got a very nice letter from Art Shaw, who was the inspector, and he said, I wish you could share this information with other people. Said, give him name and phone number, and I will. There's nothing proprietary. You're just... But we're in the progress right now of replacing the parking lot across the street. It's scheduled for July fifth, sixth, and seventh. I confirmed it with Hudgens yesterday. The concern is weather. Other than that, they had no concerns. I want to make sure it's after the Fourth of July parade, and I wanted to make sure it was probably at least amount of building personnel here because of vacation times. We replaced, have a hundred and eighty square feet of sidewalk by door six. It's just all spalled it, and it's actually a safety hazard. Trying to get that done July twenty-fifth. Supporting the transition from the juvenile detention center to the child assessment center. Open them out with that. So, that's a big deal. Working with Eagles, Aggle. But to understand what the requirements would be for the permanent shutdown of the nine-mile landfill. Our obligation goes through once a March of two thousand and twenty-four. So, I'm working with them to try to understand, all right, what other steps, what are the ongoing, so we can budget for it? Or do we just close it and we're done and be done? So, need to understand that. I'm developing a strategy to remove humidity from the animal shelter going forward, so we don't have the remediation problem that we have. Something's causing it. I've got meters running over there right now. We had a very thorough maintenance done there yesterday with one of our local contractors. They were there eight hours, two guys. They found some stuff, but we still haven't found that smoking gun. So, I'm probably leaning towards budgeting for some type of dehumidification system in there for next year. Discussion, replacement of the county in the sheriff's building. Why? So, I can sit here and tell you that our rooftop units are at the end of useful life, the roofs at the end of useful life. We've already had those discussions. Our boilers are going on twenty-eight years old. But I wanted to get out of that, and I wanted to put this more in a corporate real estate setting. So, that's my background. It came from DTE Hewlett Packard. We had standards for everything. We measured everything by square footage, cost per square foot. So, when I look at this building, twenty percent of this building is just hallways. Everything in this building has been a compromise. We had the space, so we did this. We made this space work. We've never really focused on what is going on in the building. The center, twenty-five, twenty percent of the building's hallway space. Well, we have to clean it. We have to condition it. We have to light it. Those are all costs we could avoid if we didn't have hallways that were this long, this wide. This building was constructed under nineteen sixty-four standards, which were basically institutional, like your high schools, hospitals, buildings. Even a little bit of civil defenses in there, right? That's why we have all these block walls and the hallways and such. So, if you take that into consideration, it prevents us from doing any modifications. I shouldn't say any. Anything's possible, all right? It increases costs, and it doesn't really give us a clean slate of what we need to meet our needs. When you include the commissioners' room here, which by the way, I've been checking it, it's used an average of four times a month. If we include that in the boiler room, we're almost thirty percent of our space is unusable square footage or non-productive is a better way to put it. We don't have people in here collecting taxes, filing claims. So, it's non-productive. So, trying to get away from why the building needs to be replaced from a mechanical structural, but also tell you these other things that corporations look at when they look at replacement of facility. Doesn't lend itself to remodeling. We have very limited fire detection, fire suppression system in this building. Say, why is that important? Because your liability insurance is based on square footage. Again, everything gets back to square footage, according to BOMA and NIFMA. Those are the two organizations who basically manage corporate real estate. So, if we have a twenty thousand square foot building that's not sprinkled, and this is about twenty-seven thousand square feet, our price for our insurance should go down if we have these systems in here that will prevent or stop a fire rather than burn it to the ground. Building has ten restrooms. You know that? I mean, ten restrooms that have to be cleaned, they have to be plumbed, Sloan valves have to be replaced. Ten bathrooms just in this building. You want to add that to the utilization of square footage? There's reasons why this happened. I'm not pointing fingers, is what it is, right? Also going forward, going back to my corporate background and some of the things, the problems they were having attracting people, attracting and retaining employees. As the next generation of employees start moving forward into the workplace, do they really want to come into a yellow cinder block wall with red mullions? I don't know if they do or not, but people aren't taking jobs because of the work environment. They did a huge study at it at DTE and at Hewlett Packard. And if, you know, I'm not talking about putting ping pong tables up and all this stuff they were doing out in California to retain those individuals. But if we're just looking at what's going to take us to get to world-class people that need to run the county moving forward, I think that's an important aspect of this that needs to be analyzed. Utilities, as utility costs continue to rise, have a non-productive space adds to the overall cost of the county. I can't shut just the air conditioner off for this room and run it four times a day or four times a month without increasing all kinds of air pressure in the ductwork, and Rex is experiencing this with, with the noise that's coming out, and he's having difficulty hearing people because of the fans. We don't have modulating units. We can't slow them down. They're called free drives. They're out there, but again, if we're going to look at overall strategy and what we're going to go moving forward, we probably won't need as much air conditioning. Building currently has non-insulated windows, unless they've been replaced since nineteen sixty-four because of a breakage, the original ones. The cinder block exterior walls are not insulated. We learned that when we did the modification in the administrative office. Just look right down, see the ground. One of the biggest one is poor wallet water quality is adding to the operational expense and providing including, it says, Bob, we're having to buy bottled water for some of our employees, staining the restroom seats and toilets, and it's causing premature piping failures. Each one of these represents a failure that we've experienced since I've been here. So, this is made up of the city water we receive from the village. We had it tested, and everything that's in there is legal. It's within standards, but because it's on the hot water side, and more attention you, because I know your background.
I'm not drinking that. I don't drink this water.
So, this one in particular, this happened at eight o'clock in the morning, and I just happened to walk by and it hit me. Imagine if that happened on a Friday night. No one was here till Monday morning, the damage that would have been caused. This one for the water heater, the valve is completely clogged. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon water heater. Place it with a one ninety-nine, so we don't have to consider it a boiler anymore. That's a ten-thousand-dollar expense that wasn't budgeted for. Oh, I went to call again, and I said, all right, Coligan, what do we need to do to correct this? They came back with a sixty-thousand-dollar water purification system, because it's based on the size of your inlet piping. And oh, by the way, we don't have square footage in our mechanical rooms to support what they're projecting to do. So, we're going to continue running against this ghost, and this is an old galvanized pipe. This isn't, the similar metals in the piping. This is what we're, this is all copper. It's all been replaced probably in the last fifteen, twenty years, but we're going to continue to run into this, because as those materials sit in that pipe, they just start eating away at the pipe. If we had the HVAC systems located on the ground instead of on the roof, our prices go down significantly. We currently do the filter changes. We do some laquoy cleaning, et cetera, but to get up there, it's a pain in the doo. You have to carry everything up there. You have to throw everything down. You have to get rid of it. So, we can, we, we can reduce costs. We can reduce interior square footage and still probably reduce the number of air conditioners, actually. The new building will allow us to use solar power generation. Last year, when I first started, we brought in a company, did a complete site survey, and the only thing we could come up with was building a solar array panel on the property behind the core building. At its peak, it would only generate thirty-five percent of what we need to run the whole complex, and the payback was eleven or twelve years. Oh, I, that was just, we had a roof. If it was designed right from the get-go with the solar, we'd save a lot of money, and we probably will also reduce our utility bills. Customer service, I know we call them residents, et cetera, your constituents, but you realize it's a hundred and forty-six-foot walk from the X-ray machine to the clerk's office and the treasurer's office. At another hundred feet, if they're going to Jody's office. If they have a good parking spot in the parking lot, it's a six-hundred-foot walk for some of our residents that are have to come in because they don't either have Wi-Fi where they live, or they don't understand they have to file paperwork, and they have to come in on the site. We spend a lot of our time directing people in this building. Navigating the building is very confusing. All these hallways, you know, the signage, we do our best, but both the interior and exterior signage is crazy. I didn't really hit on the sheriff's department as much, but they have the same thing. I mean, the building was a house that became a kitchen that became part of the jail. So, again, it was just, this is what we have. Let's use it. I can no one in nineteen sixty-four knew what the IT world was going to be now, right? They're worried about paper storage. They're worried about a typewriter, and they're worried about a phone on their desk. They weren't concerned with what we have now. Andy and I are working to increase his electrical distribution in his IT room here and at the animal shelter. Just because decisions were made that weren't necessarily the best decisions at the time. Sheriff's Department's got the same thing going on over there. Yes. It looks like a house with a big old dining room at one point. I talked to the sheriff. I don't even want to get into the jail, because I'm not knowledgeable enough to talk about square foot per inmate or any of that stuff. But I will tell you, the command and control center over there, it just is the last generation of command and controls with, I'm not going to call them tubes, but with a lot of capacitors and things of that nature. And now, what they have now is a table about this big to operate doors and stuff, which could now be done on a laptop, but that's just one facet that I can talk to. So, that's my report. I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, but any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Are you, are is what we're driving at, that we need a new building entirely, or this needs to be revamped? What would you propose to resolve a lot of these issues?
Well, the only thing I'm going to say to that is I believe a committee should be formed. Find out what our needs are now, what our projected needs are. I think anything we do here is just peeling off a Band-Aid, peeling off another Band-Aid, peeling off another Band-Aid. If though money was no option, I'd say, yes, we need a new sheriff's department. We need a new county building. But I don't want, if you make that statement, I'll say, you know, you're the guy that says we need a new forty-four million dollar building and whatever it would cost. You know, I put forty-four million dollars out there, and all of a sudden, I'll guarantee you on Facebook this afternoon, Bill wants forty-four million dollars. Number out.
Would you make it at the same location, or would you have it at another location if you did that?
That needs to be considered by the committee. I will tell you, we are built on top of a buried creek, and we run two sump pumps twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And we've been, I'm going to use the word drought. I don't know if it's been official drought. We haven't had rain in what, over a month, month and a half? And those sump pumps run every day. Keep the basement from flooding.
Send the water to Higgins.
They were just complaining about it.
Have you thought about a different site? I mean, a location? I mean, you live here, you lived this whole thing for years and years.
I don't think that's for me to say. I will say, from a facility standpoint, having the jail next to the courthouse, next to the clerk's office probably makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
We do a lot of things electronically, but we still do a lot of things. We're handing off paper between one another. So, that needs to be part of the analysis.
And what we would do with this building afterwards, if we did do that, too, that'd be
That's for the committee to decide.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Number two, bonding for Holton Lake, LC Project, Jody.
So, this is a pretty simple one. I know the gentleman spoke. It was hard to hear them last meeting. And Commissioner Wilson asked me if I could just summarize that in a few sentences for you guys. So, essentially, where we are at for bonding for Holton Lake is we will be funding the engineering study, the one that was already approved after biddings, et cetera, through G E I. And then, once that engineering design is finalized, we will be able to go out for bonding. We will have to pledge the full faith and credit. It will be the same for Saint Helen when we proceed in that direction as well of the county for that project. But with the establishment of a special assessment district, we're pretty much so guaranteed bonding. Rates have been anywhere between four percent and five percent right now. So, you know, hoping that that stays true as we move forward with this project. Additionally, to to that process, that will be a presentation that will have to be made to the Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners will have to accept that, because obviously, it is the full faith and credit. That would proceed forward with that.
I have some questions.
Yes.
You didn't mention Higgins Lake. You said
Not doing a project at Higgins right now.
But what is the cost at Holton? What is the projected cost? How much money are you going to be bonding? Is, I understood the figures in the past were a million, million and a half.
I have no idea. Not until the engineering is done.
But there was an estimate at one time.
That was for the lake level study. That was not to fix the control.
The lake level study was looking at, they had asked for up to one point five million.
But we don't have, we don't have no amounts on the control structure yet.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, number three, proposed policy and the agenda course on Jody European.
This is really a discussion for the Board of Commissioners. I just put together a very rough first draft of a policy. I would ask you to have a great open discussion and put something formal and clear into place so that our office, when we receive any type of correspondence, be it email or written, have that, have that directive. For those of you who may not be aware and for the public as well, we do have and utilize a commissioners@roscommoncounty.net. However, that email only goes to the secretary. And then, if the secretary has fourteen emails or, you know, it gets overlooked, it is up to them, the secretary, to forward that out to the commissioners. So, just clarifying how those processes, procedures, what goes in would be very helpful. I did also speak to John Amerman from Michigan State University Extension, who's got forty years of experience with this. He cannot find any of the counties he frequently works with that have a formal policy on correspondence, but would be more than happy to look at what your final draft is prior to adopting and give you an opinion on that as well, from a legal standpoint.
Yes. The system we have in place right now for that, I tested that yesterday. I'm computer challenged, and it worked very easy, and it was very straightforward on how to navigate it. And I, I'm happy with it unless there needs to be any cybersecurity issues attached to it, but I think the system as it is in place right now works very well.
I have some issues, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to address them with the form that was on there. This change was done on the website, and I think it's pretty important that as a communication tool or people communicating with the commissioners, that it is consistent, easy to use. And there was nothing addressed, I was never talked about it. I've been in the technology business for forty-some years. I'd like to share the issues that I have with the current form that is on the, on the site, which is implemented. The problem with these types of forms is that it diminishes contact with constituents. It makes it more difficult for constituents to communicate with us, not easier to communicate. It's old technology. These types of forms are not a good idea. They are ripe with possible fraud, as names, et cetera, can be fraudulent. One person could send fifty emails with bogus names from one computer. It's been suggested that fake email addresses could also be created to send in fake emails. However, it's much more difficult today than it used to be to create a fake email address. And it's not easy to use. Additionally, it's more difficult to verify fake email addresses with a form type of situation as is on there now, is anything could be input as an email. Verifying a real email address and its identity is easy if an email comes directly from someone as opposed to entering it in on a form. If you entered in on a form, you have to check it out. It's create additional work for our secretary to check out to verify that that was a for-real email. And instead of simply responding to that email to see if it is a valid email address. If this was a good way to communicate, then all of our correspondence with the commissioner should be done the same way with a form. Right now, the way we should do it is just like someone would have to communicate with us. They click on the link, your email service on your own computer pops up, and you're off and running. It'd be ten times simpler than having to type out all that information on a, on a form. Additionally, if someone wants to attach any supporting documentation to what they're talking about, that can be done on a form such as is on there right now. It hinders openness, and since the chairman has determined what the rules are, I think it would be very simple to just insert the following language just above the correspondence to all the commissioners and just say, if you have correspondence that you'd like entered in to the permanent record and appear on the agenda, please click the email address below to communicate with all of us at one time. If you want to communicate with an individual commissioner, click on the above individual links to do so. Your correspondence must include your name and address, so we can validate who is sending the email. Otherwise, it will not be considered for publication and the agenda. And then, the commissioner's email address would be below, or simply email would be there, and that would forward to that address. It'd be, take one or two sentences as opposed to having a form that somebody has to go out and fill out. It's very complicated. If people don't know how to work those forms, it's old technology. It really needs to be made simple, so you can just click. Your email service pops up with your email address already entered in above on the from portion, and then you enter in the information that you want to communicate to the commissioners with your name and address. That's really a much simpler way to do it. I wish I had been asked about this, but this is old technology. Old technology, it's not good. It's not easy. It's not simple. We need to make it simpler and easier for people to communicate with us, not more difficult. Thank you.
Are you saying that with your expertise, we can even make it simpler than it is now?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, right now
Absolutely, in two minutes.
Right now, what we have in place is what we have in place, and it works. But if it can be made simpler, that's probably better.
Yeah, I would like to work with the controller on that, if she'd be willing to do that. And then, we can all, of course, have it approved by the entire commission, because this is something all of us commissioners should be involved with. This is how we communicate with our, with our constituents. Make it more difficult for them to do that, I think, is not good.
But as far as changing policy, then that's not what this is about. This is about just making the system simpler, correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem with the policy. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sure everybody is aware over the last hundred years on all of our lake levels that we have language that has now been certified by the Court of Appeals at being a static number that we're not supposed to deviate from. That being said, this board, based on the hundreds of emails and communications over the last two weeks that have come out as we've had no rain and the lake levels are dropping, I'm going to advise you as the delegated authority to look at having that court order language modified, not the legal level, the court order language that would allow you to retain water after ice out. Basically, you'd be closing it up and keeping it in there to hopefully offset for a season like we are having right now, one day of rain. I don't know how that works. I don't know what it looks like. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm just suggesting that you have the possibility to change language to allow you to legally retain water to better meet your legal level. to better meet your legal levels on all three lakes.
I agree with that statement.
I'm really not in favor of banking water. But I would like to see clarification from the courts as to what they consider us to do as reasonable. Because we don't make rain. And our structures can only get rid of so much rain if we get too much at a time. So there's a lot of factors in this that are beyond our control. And I'd like some clarification from the courts on this. Perhaps we could utilize our prosecutor to pursue this.
Sounds good, Rex.
Us to the county.
Would you go with me to the prosecutor's office and we could work on this together?
Okay.
If you're Joey.
I would love if you guys took it. Thank you.
With respect.
Yes.
Okay. The controller's interpretation of the ruling that came back from the Court of Appeals is not correct. That will be gone over in the upcoming litigation on Higgins Lake. If I would suggest that we wait. If you want to go ahead and on Holton and Lake Saint Helen and and do that modification, I have no problem with that. But on Higgins Lake, I would suggest that you wait until that litigation is completed. And or at least we find out what direction it is headed before anything's done on Higgins. Because you could be stepping into another legal mess if you try to do anything right now. Litigation.
O X, the prosecutor, he should be able to put us in the right direction.
Well, I I beg to differ. The prosecutor was wrong in the last lawsuit. And the board was wrong in the last lawsuit. So I would just advise, okay, to hold off on it a little bit on Higgins Lake.
Thank you. Number five, nine one one, final service plan, Vance. You make sure your mic's on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning. So I have brought to you a resolution to update the appendixes in our E ninety one plan. And for the commissioners, the E ninety one plan is the language that the county put together back in nineteen ninety one to show to the state that we're providing ninety one service to our citizens within the county. There is a document that resides at the state and you are measured by that document. Bringing Crawford into the picture, providing them secondary P S A services requires an update to the appendix. And that allows us to make these changes without actually opening the ninety one plan, which is essentially a six month process. So what I've done is made the updates, added the language about the secondary P S A and then also updated some of the additional tables that you see here in the in the table in the back as far as who we dispatch for in a secondary purpose. So it's sounds like a big deal. It's more reformality than anything else. But the state needs to see this in the plan as we provide that service. I can tell you on a quick update and I will have something more formal for you next meeting. We are seeing anywhere from a thirty to fifty percent increase in call volume and such. Getting great feedback from both Crawford and Roscommon sides. I, based on what I'm seeing, it's going very well.
I'm sorry, Andy. I'm listening to you guys all the time, communicating with you guys all the time and different dispatchers. It seems like it's going very well. I'm there's no delays. As I mentioned earlier, you've been on the radio quite a bit lately. You're very clear. The other day, we had five agencies on one call and another call came in. And I don't know how many dispatchers were on on Saturday, but everything went very well on the dispatch. And I'm very proud of the dispatch.
Appreciate it. Yeah, we run two twenty four seven and then some of the busier holidays and special events.
You know, and I know times you come in from home and hop on the radio when something big's going on. But there was a lot of action going on Saturday and everybody was very calm and I'm very pleased.
And I will say too, as part of that, I worked with Sheriff Swope, Under Sheriff Snore, where if, for example, fourth of July, weekends coming up, they'll have two on duty through, I think, seven P M. And then the second one until midnight, they will call us before going home. And essentially, we're now staffing a four person dispatch center between the two and having additional personnel at no increased cost to us. That makes sense for them. So it's worked out. And if they stay over during the hours that we know the dispatch, that will in kind trade where we won't bill them directly for that those hours that they staff that they wouldn't otherwise.
One channel, one radio and you guys monitor several. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Vance? No, that's back there.
Yes.
It's not Vance. Yeah. Thank you. With that being said, we'll meet at ten A M. Welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Meeting, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Madam Clerk, would you like to lead us in the blood?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sensor here. Wolfson. Ostergrin. Russo.
A number for public hearing, two thousand and twenty one, Roscommon County Care Grant, M C S dash two two zero zero three seven dash C V I.
So we did receive.
Need a motion to go into the public hearing.
This chair.
I'll second that.
Chairman.
Roll call, sir.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Wolfson. Sensor, yes, Russo.
Yes.
Yes.
On January thirtieth of two thousand and twenty one, the county of Roscommon, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, M D H H S, received what is called the Community Development Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economy Economic Security Funding Opportunity. We were allotted up to two hundred fifty one thousand, six thirty four and one penny for expenses directly related to mitigating the risk of spreading COVID nineteen. These would have been for any expenses occurred in two thousand and twenty, so one one of two thousand and twenty to twelve thirty one of two thousand and twenty. Super great that there was a lot of money. Unfortunately, it could not be covered under any other grant, these expenses. And we had to basically have not already received funding for it, which makes sense. This grant came at the tail end of all the other grants that the county had already received. Based on the fact that we were not finding any related expenses to this, I submitted a number of different to our contract and none of those were covered. I was authorized to extend this reimbursement to eligible non entitlement communities, local township governments or county nonprofits that may be able to utilize them for eligible expenses. The invitation to submit eligible expenses to the county was a return date of one thirty of two thousand and twenty one. We did email through Cook Stevenson's office all of the county clerks and supervisors, letting them know of this opportunity and did reach out to several of our nonprofit organizations. The catch was eligible expenses were defined as precautions and supplies used at public elections, equipment or construction specific to providing COVID nineteen related services or care or to mitigate exposure, technology expenses specific to providing COVID nineteen related services or care, any COVID nineteen education relating to activities specific to COVID nineteen reduction, pay for quarantine of residents or employees, any wages or overtime that would not have occurred if COVID had not happened. The very few wages that we had that were related to COVID nineteen occurred through our jail. And that was due to overtime, due to exposures within the jail and our sheriff's deputies as well. And those were not considered eligible expenses, which left the county with zero to ask for reimbursement for. Obviously, we had limited expenses that were eligible. And most of our expenses were already covered or purchased through other state and federal grants that were relative to COVID and other CARES Act funding. As a side caveat, money was coming from everywhere for COVID expenses, some faster than others. This was one of the late releases. So what we ended up with was total eligible reimbursements of nine thousand, twenty nine dollars and three cents. These were specifically for sleep sacks for the Crawford-Roscommon Child Protection Council, four thousand, nine hundred seventy three dollars and fifty two cents. They were for November election precautions and payroll for working during quarantine to Roscommon Township for three thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents. And then sneeze guard shields and material in building for a sawble township of one hundred fifty eight dollars and eighty nine cents. No other townships or contacted entities applied for funding. Most informed me that they were currently utilizing programs and grants under other programs. We found out three months ago that we were required to do a close out public hearing. So here we are in two thousand and twenty three. If the public has any questions, concerns. Here we are.
Thank you, Jody. Any questions? Need a motion to go back into the regular meeting, Michelle. I'll make that motion. Any discussion? Or can you please call roll?
Milburn. Ostergrin. Sensor.
Yes.
Wolfson. Russo.
Yes.
Back in regular session.
Thank you. Number five, approval of the agenda.
Move this chair.
Discussion. Clerk, please call roll.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Sensor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson. Milburn.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for five twenty four, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting. I'll make that motion. Discussion. There, please call roll.
Sensor.
Yes.
Wolfson. Ostergrin.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Class A claims and accounts.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of seven hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred seventy six dollars and seventy eight cents.
So move. Discussion. Clerk, please call roll.
Wolfson. Sensor.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of two hundred thirty two thousand, one hundred forty nine dollars and sixty eight cents.
Move this chair.
Discussion. There, please call roll.
Sensor.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson. Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, number eight, public comment. Yes.
My name is Greg Seemack, resident of Garris Township. What I'd like to talk about are reasons that we might not want to set up a special assessment district for Higgins Lake right now. It starts with this. There is no need for a special assessment, for special assessment funding to support the dam at Higgins Lake. It's now common knowledge that there's no significant repair or maintenance that's required currently or in the near future. With that in mind, is it ethical to burden the residents of the proposed special assessment district with tens of thousands of dollars or maybe even hundreds of thousands of dollars to set this up and in motion now? Is this ethical or doesn't that matter as long as you can legally do it? Creating the sad now will alienate a huge portion of the residents of Roscommon County because creating a special assessment district is not ethical when there is no need. And the question is only, do you care if you're spending other people's money? Creating the special assessment district now will look to the average person like the county's willing to throw money at unnecessary things, giving rise to resistance to valuable millage increases when residents think about how the county spends money. There could be other solutions, including grants and private funding. It's been admitted that no other solutions were ever considered. If the board had other methods to talk about that had been considered, but can show how they're not as appropriate as a special assessment district, that would at least show effort to have done due diligence, that people feel the board owes the citizens. And these things can still be done in the case of Higgins Lake. The entire county shares in the tourist benefits that the draw of Higgins Lake provides. The county residents can conveniently use the lake. The county businesses profit from the tourist income. The county itself benefits from the huge property taxes paid by the lake access and lakefront tax base. That's why currently the entire county has the responsibility to maintain the dam at Higgins Lake. And now the county has found a legal way to get out from under their financial responsibility by giving the burden to a small group of residents. Is this ethical? Or doesn't that matter as long as you can legally do it? Let's look at some other scenarios and how they sound. About if the federal government declares that all maintenance costs for Interstate seventy five can in the future be borne by Roscommon County because the highway runs through Roscommon County and the county benefits from I seventy five. If they did that, would the county be okay with it? What if the federal government claims that the burden for I seventy five is more than they can handle in the future? Should that be reason enough or should they continue to seek other solutions? Should the county readily accept that? Would that be ethical? Or doesn't that matter as long as you can legally do it? And the state of Michigan decide that the residents of Roscommon County should pay all the costs for the state police because the state police have a post in Roscommon County. If the state's reason is that it cannot likely pay for the cost of the state police in the future, should that be okay with Roscommon residents? Would that be ethical or doesn't that matter as long as you can legally do it? What if the residents within the proposed special assessment district in Holton Lake wanted to shift the burden of the entire dam to the residents in Denton Township and they had a legal way to do that? Should the residents in Denton Township be okay with that? Would that be ethical or doesn't ethical matter as long as you can legally do it? Ask yourself this. If you stopped all activity now involving the proposed Higgins Lake Special Assessment District, what would the downside be? There is no need to hurry this. There is no current need for funding. You wait, you can stop expensive spending. You get an idea of what things you might not see coming while you analyze the progress of the special assessment districts that do have a need. You'll be smarter about how you deal with Higgins Lake. I'm again asking this board to reconsider the decision made by the old board in December of two thousand and twenty two and rescind the resolution that creates a special assessment district for Higgins Lake. There's no reason now and it's placing a huge financial burden on a small group of residents of Roscommon County. Is doing this now ethical? Or doesn't that matter if you can legally do it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Make sure the green light's on. And please state your name.
My name's Gail Wadele. My address is one oh one Kenmore on Higgins Lake. I'm not a full-time resident here, but my family has owned property. Either there or right across the road since nineteen sixty-seven. And the man previous to me um asked or described quite a few of the questions that I have written down. But I just, since we've been up here at Higgins Lake. There used to be many restaurants on the west and south side of Higgins Lake. There are none now except for the Silver Dollar. There used to be grocery stores. There are none now. So is this tax thing that you're proposing? This to me is just going to drive more businesses away or more people away from being on the lake. So your tax, your tax revenue is going to go down and um, it's very sad. When our kids were little, there was a party store just down the road. Treasure Coast Boulevard, I think it is anyway. That my father and my children would go down and get worms. That's gone. So there's just there's hardly any businesses on the west side of Higgins Lake and then going around to the south. There was a really good restaurant, I think the landmark, and that's, that's gone. So me, so much is being taken away from Higgins Lake. If you put this new tax on which I, I have joined this group and they brought up some different things. Um, I can go, I can go all into some of them. The money, the spend on legal and engineering fees, I've been told that's quite a few thousand dollars already. What is that money really done? It hasn't gone to repair anything or maintain the dam. It's just high-priced fees looking at different things. But as I've been told, Higgins Lake Dam is in good shape. It was rebuilt in two thousand ten, two thousand seven, excuse me. And it's been in good shape. My understanding is the dams in Houghton and Lake St. Helen are not in good shape. But these other dam, this dam on Higgins Lake is in good shape and so I don't see why you are adding it in with these other two lakes. I just had to put a new dry well on my property. So I am trying to do the right thing. And I just don't see why you're going to burden us with another tax. I know some of the homes on Higgins Lake are beautiful monsters. My place is just a very small little cabin. I really not afford to pay any more taxes, so. Look over my questions here and see if there was anything else that that he, the former man, did not cover. So I think that I think really there was everything covered that he said, but um, again, make, make us pay more taxes, just when it's not necessary. If it was necessary, if this dam was in bad shape. And, you know, go ahead, we would pay tax, but I think all the property owners should be paying it. Not just the ones that live on the lake or have property on the lake proper because everyone benefits from the lake, so. I think that's all my questions and my response. I've been told you do not respond to the questions. But please take it into consideration that Higgins Lake. Me, especially when Swimmer's itch was in, you know, going, Higgins Lake was a dying lake. My family did not come up those two or three years. Now they've started coming up again. And then I've had to tell them, well, Grandma, maybe selling this place because I just cannot afford any more taxes. Any more expense, especially on something that is not needed at Higgins Lake. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Ron Kelch. That'll be on green. My name is Ron Kelch. I live at the, my wife and I, Linda, live at the southeast end of Higgins Lake for the last thirty years. She retired from second grade teaching at Roscommon Elementary. About ten years ago, I was here and some of you may remember I presented about the Higgins Lake water level. And um I've made a few observations. The lady before me did such an excellent job. She stole a lot of what I was going to say. Very welcome. Some, some observations that's become clear to a lot of us in the last few years is that there are basically two types of government. There's a serving government. Which adheres to the basic principles of our country, which is to represent the majority. While protecting the individual and the minority, and we call that a republic. There's another type of government called a self-serving government. And we're all quite aware of those since most of the governments in the world are like that. And indeed, we see some some characteristics of that in uh, in Washington DC with the great self-licking ice cream cone. That we see there, which has resulted in, in the last few years for every hundred people living in this country. To invaded across illegally the southern border in the last few years. That's the kind of thing that happens with a a self-serving government. A serving government, we're lucky to have that here in Roscommon County. Um, ten years ago, I had the privilege of working with one of the esteemed past members of this board, Lowell Sauer. And as a result of that. Uh, there's a company now that employs seventy people. It makes a product that significantly reduces carbon footprint. It helps people's health by eliminating particulate from diesel exhaust. An example of what a serving government can do for people. How does that apply now to the lake level of Higgins Lake? When I presented ten years ago, not a whole lot has changed. Uh, we all know what the basic facts are. Uh, something like a hundred years ago. The legal level was established. And that worked well for like eighty-five, ninety years. And then some people decided that they would like to see what the effect of lower lake levels would be. The two things happened. First, the, the county commissioners took over the responsibility of controlling the lake level. Previously, it had just been done, the road commission did it and and that worked well for like eighty-five years. Um, with these changes. The dam was changed. Now, how was it changed? Well, the, the top of the dam is at legal level. And it has an uncontrolled spillway. Now, what is the effect of that? Well, the effect of that is, you know, people want to talk about banking water, that you can't bank water. Well, this, this dam does not bank water because the top of the dam is at legal level. The only time the level goes up is when there's a north wind and you accumulate water in the lagoon. And the gauge level goes up and because water has accumulated in the lagoon. So if you can't bank water, it's like having a checking account without a savings account. You, you, it's very hard to maintain a balance if you can't save something. So without being able to to do that, what's the best that we can do? Well. A self-serving government would do nothing. And the, the result of that would not be good. Uh, at best, all that's going to be accomplished is to enrich in the legal profession. Serving government like we have here would say, okay, my job is to maintain the lake level at the legal level. How can I do that with the tools that are now in place? Fix a spillway. It's as simple as that. Thank you very much for your time. I know you're a serving government and you will do the right thing.
And you can speak in the next session also if you want to, Mr. Kelch.
Oh, that's fine. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Well, good morning. Um, quick lawsuit update. The Courage versus Roscommon County Treacher. No current change. Chill versus Roscommon, no change. As a reminder, we do have mid-end of July, a status conference hearing. Um, scheduled in thirty-four Circuit Court for the Roman back from the Court of Appeals. Um, Osterden versus Roscommon County at all. The plaintiff has filed an application for leave of appeal to the Supreme Court. Um, Oscarin versus Melbourne, there is no change. That will be dependent upon the outcomes of Cho versus Roscommon County. Um, the current obit suit, um, class action, even though it's not a class action by definition. Um, there has been no change. It's still proceeding forward with Walgreens and two other pharmacies for settlement. Special assessment projects. Um, Houghton Lake, we are currently exploring the options for financing, obviously. That will move forward once we have that engineering predictions of the plans. Um, hmm, ideally, that planning stage will come forward once the process for putting a new delegated authority has happened. Um, but that design and construction will then be the, the construction portion. And the oversight of construction will then be a part of what you're bonding for as well. Um, once finance, finance is established, that's when you'll be able to put a shovel in the ground and start projects for that. Um, we are caught right now in working with the state of Michigan to establish a legal easement for access of our three existing lake level control structures. Um, Houghton Lake is the only one that does not have a legal access to it for us. But we are hopeful to work with the state as they own about three fourths of the property that we can utilize to have that legal easement established fairly quickly. And hopefully not for more thousands of dollars. Or granting of that as well. Lake St. Helen, the boundaries for Lake St. Helen Special Assessment District are established. There was a presentation to the Higgins Township Board. Um, that was really well attended and thank you to Commissioner Wilson for attending. I had a bad concert, so. Feel bad. Um, there was actually a lot of information that was garnered that night in regards to D just access for parcels that, looking at the property. It weren't readily accessible, um, so that, that helps their district to know, you know, to put those in there. So there's been a lot more deep pulling on Lake St. Helen. Um, to review specifics in some of the neighborhoods that were mentioned. Um, to verify, obviously, the information that was obtained. There is a presentation to the Richfield Township Board on June twentieth at six PM. Um, there is a petition to the circuit court that would be filed shortly after that hearing. Obviously, in case there's more information, concerns, um, questions, parcels we have in that really shouldn't be in. Um, those things would need to be investigated before the petition was filed. The petition to establish boundaries for the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District was actually filed this morning. Um, with thirty-four Circuit Court. The court will assign a hearing date. Um, when the attorney's office did file on our behalf, our circuit court let them know that they were scheduling out towards the end of this year. We are going to make a vehement argument for why summer is the best time. Um, to have that before people go away, before Labor Day, uh, whether we are accepted with that or not. Um, that will be a court decision, obviously, but that argument will be made. Once there is a date solidified, then I will, of course, communicate that to the commissioners. Um, we'll put information up on both our website and the Roscommon County Lake Levels website. And there will be a mailing to all of those included in the district boundary for the date of that hearing. Additionally, with Higgins Lake not a part of the special assessment process. Um, Spicers did conduct on Friday an onsite inspection of the lake level control structure to review the erosion concerns that have been brought forth by the Board of Commissioners. Um, I have not received a final evaluation on that yet. Um, I did have a member of our maintenance team go out there to assist to make sure that those areas that have been brought up were specifically looked at to be addressed. Um, as soon as it's here, I will give it to the board. The total cost of the inspection was twelve hundred dollars. Um, and that includes the report that we'll give. Once that's there, that'll be then, of course, up to the Board of Commissioners to determine what actions you'd like to board on with that. Lake Levels are awful. I don't know what else to say. We were supposed to get three days of rain and I was hopeful for all of us. Um, currently Higgins Lake is two point two inches below. St. Helen is one point five, like five, six inches below and Houghton Lake is point one two inches above. That being said, there is a canoe marathon that occurs very shortly here. And they utilize the bays to race under for the Houghton Lake control structure. It is the second year of this canoe marathon, so there will have to be the briefest of openings. To allow for passage of those canoes for that race, so. Is it the fourth year? Okay. This is the first year I've had to be involved in that. Um, but it does bring quite a, quite a bit of economics to Houghton Lake, so in the area in general. And scholarships, yeah, they do provide scholarships. All right. Um, quick legislative update, and this is one that, that concerns me. It's not necessarily a change, but there are several bills. Um, at the state level to put together a commission to study criminal justice reform. As you know, um, the county general fund is responsible for jail one point seven million dollars. We have a lot of responsibility for costs associated with the criminal justice system at a county level. Um, that being said, funding units are not actually being proposed as a part of this commission. Um, I think that's a huge oversight. Michigan Association of Counties is obviously opposing these and banging for a seat at the table for counties to be recommended. Speaking again of unfunded mandates, as we like to call them, this could put counties in the position of having to figure out what to cut to fund state mandates again. I would urge any of you that have connections with House or Senate representatives to demand that counties be included on this commission. So that there is some real, uh, real understanding of how the financing works. Prior to, to things being put into place. That being said as well, it also puts in the position of being able to have people that actually can talk directly with our county law enforcement's correction staff to provide in, input that actually is meaningful. Um, obviously, sometimes people that are not boots on the ground, ideas look great on paper. But they're not really so good when you're put practical. So I would just urge you guys to please reach out if you can. Um, to ask to make sure that there is county representation. Daily work, um, really, there has been, um, a lot of day-to-day operational closings for our audit. Um, Jim Anderson is done onsite. He's finalizing things at home, which means I get random phone calls, texts and emails from him. I'm asking for just additional insight oversight. Um, we are still estimating to have dropped roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our fund balance. That's a drop of roughly two point five percent, which of course will bring us below the minimum fifteen that we had going into the year. Um, as a reminder, those things are directly related to costs that we had to bear for additional juvenile justice systems, um, along with some other increases in those public safety areas. Um, that we were able to offset, thank you, with having a fund balance, but then we'll have to focus on getting that fund balance back up as well. Um, Noel and I did have a virtual meeting with our third-party benefit administrator. Um, Jennifer discussed with us her conversations with Priority Health in regards to our upcoming Jennifer discussed with us her conversations with Priority Health in regards to our upcoming benefit renewal. The short short and dirty of it is we are currently at a hundred and six percent usage. Ideally, to see no increase, you would be under ninety percent usage. It's basically a net pooling with everybody's usage and a combination of average age of participants. If you're going to be between like ninety to ninety-five percent, you'd be looking at like a single-digit, small, single-digit ninety-five to a hundred, higher, single-digit, anything over a hundred, you're going to be in double digits. So that will be a portion that's facing us. That with the fact that the average age of our persistent participant is forty-seven and continues to increase. Well, will be interesting to see what we got. Like I said, we will have it in July. Jennifer is also reviewing what potential changes to our participants, how that may affect anything that the board may choose to do with benefits to give some great facts and figures to you so that in July, once we have that information, you can make some informed decisions as we move forward. I had the opportunity to meet yesterday with trustee Appi and Treasurer Kruger of Girish Township. I'm pretty sure all of the commissioners received the same email from trustee Appi in regards to wanting to discuss questions and concerns regarding the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District. We spent almost two hours cashing through things, disagreeing, agreeing, and general listening on both parts. That that was a well-spent, well-spent two hours. Finally, I will let you know two things. Vance left. Nine-one-one is actually currently searching for an assistant director. The posting is internal currently. If there are no internal candidates that apply or are hired from that pool, then it will move to external postings. And finally, we are scheduling the meeting of our Wage and Salary Committee. As a reminder, what the policy is every year is that they meet and they do comparisons with like counties with like taxable to schedule where our wage scale is compared to other counties' wage scales in order to make recommendations or potential increases in wages to keep us competitive.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Julie, what's the current total expenditures? I know we just got some bills on all of the S A Ds on all the lakes. Do you, do you have a, happen to have a running total on? Thank you.
For Holden Lake, it is currently two hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and ten seventy-seven. My caveat to that is about a hundred thousand of that is specific to dam restoration. So that will actually pull over not from establishing the sad but going into restoring and fixing the current issues for the dam. Higgins Lake is currently at eighty-nine thousand, four seventy-seven ninety-two. And Lake St. Helen is at thirty-two thousand, six fifty-eight twenty-five. And that, of course, is both legal and engineering bills mixed in.
Other quick question. Who is the maintenance employee who wanted Spider Sir to inspect the dam?
At that point in time, it was our lead maintenance tech as our director was on vacation.
Okay, who was that? Lead maintenance tech. You can't provide a name or?
I mean, I can. I don't know. That's what Doug.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. In the last meeting that we had, you had mentioned and talked about the current expenditure expenditures for the S A D on all of our lakes being applied for by our tax fund. Is that, can we still do that and a hundred percent of that be applied? I understand there was some confusion recently. May maybe the chair can answer this that he, that he mentioned in one of the meetings that it may be a smaller percentage than that. Mister Chair? At a hundred percent?
Right now, we're looking at a hundred percent.
Okay, is there any reason that would change? Okay, so we can, is a, is a board, we can still vote that? So the expenditures for the S A D so far. Okay.
Correspondence, we, the board has packets A through H. Monthly department reports, we have E D C. Roscommon County Animal Control. Zeriv visitors. Rebecca. Unfinished new business, A. We have an updated, updates lake level management committee. I don't know if Rex or Darlene's gonna talk.
You've all been provided with an outline of how we're going to proceed with that procedure. It's pretty well in consensus by the board that we're to proceed that way. If you have any things you want to talk about, discuss on it or comments on it, please let one of us know.
I have a quick, quick question or comment. Can, can this be published on our website so the public can see what this is?
Is it possible for you to email me a copy and then I can just put it on there?
Then the public can know what's going on. We're all up here talking about, we got this in front of us and nobody knows. Anything about, you know, like to really have open communications. Thank you. Thank you.
And so with, with the board's consensus, we'll continue with this process.
Oh, very much so.
Okay. Thank you.
Darlene, did you have anything you want to add?
I'd like to mention that this has been a lot of work, especially on Darlene's part. And the whole, whole process is going to be a lot of work, but we'll get through it.
Actually, I'm very impressed on how far you got in a short amount of time. Thank you very much. Number fourteen motions.
More new business?
Oh, yes.
I'd like the board to consider we adopt a policy that something like our employees of Roscommon County do not have to put up with rudeness or belligerence in the public or anybody else. I don't know how we draft that policy to read, but I don't think our employees need to be subjugated to that type of.
Oh, we already have that?
I don't believe so.
If we don't, we should.
That's what I'm saying is I'd like the board to consider that we have a policy in place for that.
Work on a few different people come up with something. Thank you.
Come on, Marcus.
Yes, sir.
Glad you brought that up, Rex. I'd like to piggyback off that. Wasn't sure where to bring it up. You know, Jody and Julie Bell are some of the finest professionals I've had the pleasure to work with during my commissioners. They had their integrity is highly intact and exceptional employees. The public service is the highest regard. There's been a lot of discussions through the last few months, choosing the different processes, a lot of, a lot of attacks have been made toward them. I would ask the public, matter of fact, I wouldn't ask the public, I insist the public direct those comments and directly to the commissioners not to our trained professionals in our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number fourteen motions and resolutions.
Motion number one, move to adopt the following business communication guidelines for the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners in order to protect the existing workplace culture and accommodate both employees and elected officials' needs to maintain work-life balance by decreasing pressures to respond and act immediately on non-emergent topics and issues. Core business communications shall occur Monday through Friday between the hours of eight A M. and six P M. And as permitted by the individual elected official. All communication will comply with the Open Meetings Act and will be subject to FOIA if applicable. Business communication should utilize the following guidelines. Communication type email during core business communication hours, routine requests and information sharing outside of core business communication hours, hold or use scheduled send. For online communication tools, communication as it relates, relates to a specific project. And that's during core business hours. Outside of core business hours, establish do not disturb notice. For phone calls and video calls during business hours, sensitive or complex topics, relationship building outside of hours, time-sensitive or urgent only. Text messages during time-sensitive or urgent and outside of time says sensitive or urgent only.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have some discussion. I'm going to vote no on this and, and for several reasons, we as commissioners should be available to the public twenty-four seven. And I, out of respect to you, Mr. Mr. Milver, I tried to set up a scheduled send for my emails because that was one of the things that you were a little bit upset with me. Working with Andy, we cannot do it within our system to do that because I was gonna, Dave, you mentioned your problems with getting emails at eleven at night. And what I would suggest is possibly that you go into the email system and look at it during business hours. If that accommodates you much better, I, I don't know. I get my emails when I go online and I, and I plug in and I want to look at them. And I don't know why you would want, in other words, if I send out an email at eleven at night. I don't expect it to be read at eleven at night. I don't expect it, might not be read for two or three days. So that's what I'm suggesting is that of the rest of us, I know that Rex and Darlene, we're all in a system where we have to go out online and look at our emails from the county there. So that I did try to accommodate you on that, but I, I'm all, I'm just gonna maybe regular employees, this would be a good, a good motion, but as commissioner, I, I, I have to vote no on this.
Darlene, you have anything?
The only comment is, is far as the eight and six and I have a full-time job. So for me to do county work between hours of eight and six on a day-to-day basis for me, oh, lots of times, it is later, I try to do as much as I can through those hours. But there is times where I can't, I am tied up and it has to take place after those hours. That's my biggest thing with that.
I would like to just myself look into this a little bit more because the eight to six, I understand where Darlene's coming from. I think it's cutting off a little too short. As far as like twenty-four hours, you know, everybody has a life also. So I'll probably vote no at this point and I'd like to just the eight to six, you know. I think we could go a little bit later and a little bit earlier, you know.
I'll try to accommodate Mr. Milver on that much as I can. We, we don't talk that much anyway, but I know that I communicate with the other commissioners lots of different hours because we do have other jobs.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
This, this policy does permit each individual board member to determine how they and what times they are contacted. It gives us all leniency and if one, one board member or any board member wishes to stay within that timeframe, they can choose to do so. There's more that goes on here sometimes than just I'm a county official and I gotta be open twenty-four seven.
Yeah, I disagree.
Medical reasons or anything could crop up why an individual does not want to be contacted beyond them hours. This policy gives us the flexibility to choose each one of us when we want to be contacted.
You know, Mister Chair, I, you have your full emotion. The reason being is, I mean, I got three emails from you yesterday. And there's been emails that have gone out asking Jody to do different things on a Sunday night at late at night. Eleven o'clock at night, asking Jody to do certain things in the morning. I've always felt that you know, that you and I have been commissioners now a total of thirty years.
Right.
We never had to implement this policy because the bottom line is it was only understood that we would contact each other at a reasonable time.
Correct.
And if I need to reach any commissioner at a reasonable time, I would.
But I would hate to put.
Asking Jody to do certain things in the morning, my opinion has been unreasonable. And I, I think I got three emails from yesterday. I don't think I've sent three emails to you in the last six months.
What times were they sent?
Afternoon.
Business hours.
I, I know, but, but Eric, what you, what you're missing here is the fact that three times in one day unless there's something, is there something that pertinent that you have to contact me three times in one day in an afternoon? I got a kid too. I got my own personal life. I don't have a problem being contacted. I think Darlene's contacted me one time in six months. I don't think Rex ever has contacted me three times in one day.
Well, Mark, that doesn't mean you have to read them. You don't have to read the emails. If I send an email, you don't want to read it and you want to read it at your leisure, that's fine.
You say here at the last meeting that you have a tracker so when you know where they're opened up. The bottom line is be concise and clear. I don't need to be contacted three times one day. I really don't. I'm, I'm just not that important. And I think you've done this to Jody, you've asked her to do the right things. It just doesn't need to, the policy needs to be put in place because I think it's, it causes harassment issues.
If our system would allow us to do that, and I checked into that, if our system would allow us to do that, I would make it a controlled send to send it between the hours of eight and four.
I think you're missing the point. Three times in one day, yesterday afternoon. I, I don't think you're catching.
It's county business, Mister Milver.
Three times in one day.
I guess it depends on how much work you want to put into the job.
Okay, going there. Clerk call roll.
Matter of fact, Mister Chair, I'd be happy to pull the motion.
Okay.
We already called for the vote. So we have to vote. Wilson.
I didn't think we had a motion to support this, yeah.
We have a motion in a second. You were in discussion.
We're voting for or against?
Yes, yes.
I'm for it.
Ostrich.
No.
Russo. Milver.
I go, yes, if Rex is gonna go, I'll go with something.
Answered.
Something.
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, motion number two, please.
Move to support and affirm the legal levels of Houghton Lake, Lake St. Helen and Higgins Lake as originally established by the court order in nineteen twenty-six and affirmed by court order in nineteen eighty-two. Recent actions by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners have brought the legal levels into question as to possibly being changed. And it is the desire of the current Board of Commissioners to acknowledge to the public that they support those legal levels. And the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledge that those legal levels currently established by court order will be continued.
Is anybody gonna entertain a motion?
The motion's entertained, I believe. Yes, I make that motion.
Is there a second? Once again, is there a second? With no second, the motion dies.
Mister Chair, can I make a comment on that?
Too late.
Stop discussing.
Second. Committee reports. Who would like to start?
I'll start. I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mister Milver.
E D C. Animal Control with Darlene, District Health. We did the fly-in at the airport and I went to older Michigan Union's day a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if I remember reporting that last time. Other than that, that's all I have, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I had animal control. I had District Health and within that, we have a person in finance meeting as well where we review budgets. We look at the classification, compensation study reports. If wages were currently in line with other counties for the same type of jobs. And we also talked about in legislature, there is a bill being looked at regarding septic inspections and having them done with it every five years. Like if that passes, that will also be of departments.
Ouch. Talk about a budget issue if that happens.
It'll be statewide.
Okay, I had claims and accounts in the agenda meeting and also you and Rex were countless hours on this too.
Yes, I attended hazardous waste thing. I was put on the tire brigade. We unloaded and stacked almost five hundred tires that day. And so the whole thing went good. Really nice thing that was, we had three loads come in that people had gone out in the woods and picked up those tires and brought. And paid three dollars a tire for us to take them. You know, we're having some effect and like I said, it was almost five hundred tires when unloaded and stacked. So the whole event went good.
Thank you. Number sixteen, public comment. Yes, ma'am. It's green. Okay. State your name, please.
I am Charlene Cornell. Three things that occurred to me in this meeting and the work session today that I wish you would consider. The one is the ethical consideration of what you're doing with creating the SAD and taking it's like when there's no project planned, no need. The only need for money that you need now that's been spent is on attorney fees and engineering fees. Was it ethical to pass that along to all of us when there's not a need for the dam at this moment? Another thing, um, and I was speaking to Jody in the hall about this. How many of you think to yourself, I know you can't talk to me, like the executive orders that are being thrown down from Washington DC? This is just like an executive order. You're throwing a tax or a cost to the repairians. Or you to get some money. That's what it is right now, there's no project, you just want money. The third thing is. Who likes an unfunded mandate? When you just raise your eyebrows and your hands when they talked about the health departments are gonna start having to pay for the septic inspections. Unfunded mandates are passed on to all of us, you all, to put in your budgets. This is like what you're doing creating the SAD is giving us a mandate to pay you all. Or again, a project that on Higgins isn't even necessary, I I just don't understand it. And then the last motion that you all shot down, isn't that, ask yourself, isn't that state law? The legal levels and you just voted not to follow the state law with the legal levels, I don't get it. I just don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
One of the comments which I hadn't really prepared, but it just occurred to me is, there's been many times where this board. As mentioned that they had no interest in changing the legal lake levels of Higgins Lake. And you just had the opportunity to say that. And you wouldn't do it. I'm stunned by that. Talk about. But this is the other thing I wanted to say. Earlier, I spoke about what the reasons might be that a special assessment district in Higgins Lake might not be appropriate to set up right now. What are the reasons that the commissioners have decided to create a special assessment district at Higgins Lake now? And do those reasons stand up to scrutiny? One of the reasons is we're doing it for other lakes now, so we should do it for Higgins Lake now also. I believe very few people would think this is a valid reason. Another reason is that the attorney hired to create the special assessment district suggests that the county should do it to employ economies of scale. While we're creating special assessment districts at others' lake that need them. Attorney's suggestions are self-serving, more litigation creates more fees. It already looks to most people like the county is allowing the attorney to suggest more projects. Under the guise of needing it now. The unfortunate pattern looks like things are suggested to create more legal fees. Another thought is that it needs to be put in place just in case it's ever needed. As I understand this, we're shifting the financial burden of anything that might be needed for the dam, which is currently the responsibility of the county. To the local residents within the SAD boundaries. Most people in the SAD see this as giving a blank check to the people who will make decisions about dam management. And giving the bill to the special assessment district residents. Another stated reason that is has is needed to protect the county from liability of catastrophic failure. Such as what occurred at Sanford Lake. We're not talking about Sanford Lake, we're talking about Higgins Lake. It's not necessary to protect against the liability of something that has never happened. In the history of Higgins Lake and is physically impossible to happen at Higgins Lake, think about that. One reason that the SAD is being created is to guard against something that is physically impossible to happen. And that reason yet all valid. I I honestly can't understand why this is being pursued at Higgins Lake. I I don't know why the board does not understand that this is not going to appear as though it's a. Logical thing to do and necessary at this time. And I really think it's gonna hurt in the future as to what the public thinks about how things are being run. And I'm just stunned by the whole thing and especially that the hurry to do everything right now. There is no downside to stopping this and waiting. There's a lot of reason that things can be learned. By looking at how the other situations are implemented and finding out what things you might wanna know. If you ever want to do this again at Higgins Lake. To rush this through right now is a huge error. I don't know what else to say and I'm stunned by the fact that no one thinks that they have the ability to wait. When there's not a necessary project to fund.
Thank you. Any other public comment? It's a green light on.
It is now.
Please state your date.
Morning, my name's Dave Barron and I'm resident of Lyon Township. I have been attending a number of these meetings, mostly through Zoom. Watching the interactions of this board, I question how you were elected. One commissioner asked another board member a reasonable question and she was offended by the demands and the questions. Going to the, which should go through with the supervisor. A new commissioner who was trying to bring the lake levels to nineteen eighty-two levels. Legal levels is taken to court because he's taken upon himself to install another board. This resulted in the offended board member creating another lawsuit. This board has the audacity to continue supporting the dam, that's with an N, S A D. You want the lakefront owners to shoulder the burden, even though many others who use this lake. Are not asked to pay for any of the needed repairs of the dam. The Higginway Higgins Lake Property Owners Association sent all of you a written letter stating answers. To your concerns as to why the S A D. If you weren't so busy fighting amongst yourselves, maybe would listen to your constituents and do the job in which you were elected. There wouldn't be a lawsuit forcing you to meet the nineteen eighty-two legal judgment. Another recent lawsuit against a new commissioner trying to bring the lake level to legal levels. Instead of being reprimanded. Would a reprimand would be sufficient. If the commissioners had done their jobs, you would not be wasting the taxpayers' money in court. And maybe would have enough money to take care of the dam and not burden the lakefront owners with another tax. Please stop fighting amongst each other, begin working together and listen to the constituents, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to give you a kind of a little bit of insight, there's currently legislation. Uh, out there, Senate bills and House, the equivalent House bill regarding how elections are going to proceed. Uh, is starting in twenty twenty-four with the proposal, the passage of proposal to last November. So early voting is going to is a thing, it is going to occur and it will start with the February election. As of now, that's what I've been told, February twenty-seventh is a presidential primary rather than the March date. So hopefully that doesn't change again, um, with that, so we'll have filing deadlines, uh, for proposals. Commissioner Wolfson did ask about that earlier. Um, if you are considering any proposals to be on the ballot for that presidential primary election, those will have to be filed. I believe it's twelve weeks prior, which would be December fifth. So unless they change that and make it fifteen weeks prior, that would be a date through three Tuesdays before that in November. So just to make you aware of that, the townships, um, I don't, don't know how much they've planned for it, the clerks are pretty good about. Making sure they're aware of what the election dates are and such, but with that early voting, I don't think a lot of people realize. But for nine days prior to the election, voters are gonna be able to go into a selected jurisdiction. Um, whether townships decide to combine and have one early, um, early voting precinct or, you know, narrowed it down. Or if each individual one does it within their place, um, there was, they've asked as far as the county hosting it. I know there's some counties that are doing it as well, our building is not really suitable for that. Because of the four hundred and sixty feet as, um, Director Sullivan pointed out to the clerk's office. And the rooms that have to be secured, so. There's a lot of expenses that are going to come about and they have to have, just like on election day, they have to have three election workers. And it's for nine days, eight hours a day. And they have to have three election workers in the polling place at all times. Now, this is also gonna allow absent voters who receive a ballot to, they can come in. And if they haven't voted their ballot, they can vote it in the early voting polling place, they can run it through the tabulator. Results are not gonna be provided at the end of every day, those ballots are gonna have to be removed and secured up until election day. Um, there's still several things that are being worked out, uh, the early voting can actually be extended up to twenty. I don't remember if he said twenty-nine, twenty or twenty-nine days prior. That would probably be more utilized in larger counties where they have larger jurisdictions, higher voter turnout. So there's still a lot of things that are being worked on with that, I printed off the bill the other day, I just haven't had a chance to read it through all of it. But I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up as to where things are going regarding elections next year. One of the other things that, um, was implemented in that is that now individuals who are on the permanent A V list. They can indicate on their application one time that they wanted a ballot for every single election. So our costs for elections for ballot orders has just significantly increased. Because I'm going to have to order at least one hundred percent for registered voters for every jurisdiction within our county. Um, it will probably have to be more because we have instances now in in the past where an individual would receive a ballot. Or get a ballot mailed out and previously how it was is they were sent an application automatically for every election. And if they chose not to vote, then there was no harm, no foul as far as a ballot, we weren't sending a ballot out. Sometimes they would request the ballot because they didn't know what the election was about. And they would get the ballot and then choose not to vote it and return it. So again, it was still, we were still, you know, anyway, but, um. So now, every single election, if a voter chooses to receive a ballot for every election, whether they decide to vote it or not. We're gonna have to have that ballot cost, our ballot cost is gonna increase because those ballots, those clerks are gonna have to send that ballot out. And how they're going to manage that with the applications, whether they have to constantly have an application. For that constantly photocopy that application for the voter for every single election, don't know, there's still a lot of details again to be worked out on that. Um, so just so you're aware, there's, there's gonna be some increase in costs. In how elections are run from now on, yes?
Michelle, I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, are these ballots gonna be sent out to every registered voter?
They, if, only if, so currently now, if a voter votes A V and they submit their application. For absent voter ballot, there's gonna be a box, it's my understanding, there's gonna be a way on there for them to indicate that they want a ballot for every election. So how is that gonna be covered if they move, if they're out of town? Because as it's been pointed out several times over the last several months, that a lot of our residents aren't here in the winter time. So we're gonna have the increased cost of mailing ballots to anybody who request requests to get a ballot for every single one. So it's not every registered voter on the voter list, so it's not gonna go out to every registered voter. It's only gonna be people who are on the permanent A V list that request to have a ballot sent every time. But then it's gonna be, the responsibility is gonna be on that voter that if they do leave for the winter months and they're not here, that they need to make sure that their clerk. Has their their address in wherever they're spending their winter months to make sure that they receive their ballot.
But what I'm concerned about is when I was campaigning and I got a copy of the registered voters list. Uh, I visited hundreds of homes and minimum of fifteen to twenty percent were inaccurate, the people weren't living there. I went to, I went to one place, the guy was born in nineteen eighteen and the gal was born in nineteen twenty-one and there was no house there. Okay, registered voters, okay, and I documented, I documented all that stuff. And, uh, our voter registration lists are terrible, absolutely terrible, and I know it's not just this county. So, uh, that's what's concerned to me, if these things start getting sent out, uh, you've got ballots floating around all over the place that anybody can sign and send in.
Right, and that that is a major concern as well, but the voter spoke, this is what the voters wanted, they wanted the ballots mailed out, they wanted the ability. To request one time to have a ballot mailed to them for every single election, but again, it's only the people that submit the application. And, um, you know, into that effect as well, you know, we have a lot of, uh, people up here. Well, I can't say a lot because I don't know the exact number, but I do know that I'm aware of it because one day as registered deeds. I was up there and had an individual come in to record a deed and I asked, cause it is a downstate address, I said, is this where you receive your mail? Well, yes, that's my downstate address, but I have my driver's license up here so I can. So we have a lot of that kind of situation too, which isn't the same as if there's no building there or if somebody is a hundred years old. I mean, God bless them if they live to be a hundred, I don't know that I'd want to, but, um, you know, so I I understand your concerns. And believe me, the clerks have the same concerns and they're very worried about it.
What are our townships clerks doing about it?
I can't speak for them, I don't know what they're doing.
I have, I have a big concern for that because I've never heard of anything ever being done.
Right, and I think that for them, they have, they have to work with their assessors because, you know, the assessors are the ones that are going out and required to do those field. Field site visits, uh, well, every five years, they're supposed to, I don't know how many they're supposed to visit within each year, if it's every year or within five, every five years. I'm not entirely sure how that process works, but that's where it's really important to have that communication amongst the, um. Amongst the entity, the municipality itself is that, you know, if the assessor's going out and they're going someplace and they recognize that there's no building anymore. You know, maybe they say, hey.
Well, that was the most, most, in most of the cases that I, when I visited somebody, there were. Three couples registers at the same address and only one couple lived there because the house had been sold ten years ago. Also been sold seven years ago, fifteen years ago, they had no idea who they were.
Yeah, and some people, um, don't, if they move out of state, they may not change their voter registration. And so if there's no communication between the states or anything like that. Um, there's something else I was just thinking of when you were asking me that as well, but, uh, it escaped me. So, but yeah, it's, there's, it takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of effort and there's a lot of work that needs to be done, I don't disagree with you at all on that. So, but you know, oh, I remember now, so I've called the Bureau of Elections before and this was many, many years ago. But so if we have homeless people, uh, homeless people, a homeless person can go and they can register and their address can be. Where two roads meet, it doesn't have to actually be a physical address. where two roads meet. It doesn't have to actually be a physical address. So that's, and I'm like, how is that even possible? And, cause they have to have some, some location, provide some location to register to vote. So I, I, you know, I if you could figure out how to fix it, great. Please let us know. That is all. Thank you for letting me speak longer.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, you do.
Gail Wadeall, one oh one Kenmore. Okay, I just have a very simple question. I think it was Ms. Valentino was saying the costs so far that have been spent on this SAD. I think those figures ought to be like, you have my, uh, email address. I think those figures ought to be broken down and sent to every resident, at least the ones you have the cell, the email address because I cannot understand why Higgins Lake, you've spent eighty-nine thousand dollars for something that the dam is in perfect shape. And Higgins Lake is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That just blows my mind. Um, Lake St. Helen wasn't quite as bad, but that's still a lot of money. So I wish that those figures could be sent to everyone. I would like it broken down each hour, each minute that whoever is charging this, it's, me, it's ridiculous. Very ridiculous. I'm, my husband and I were dairy farmers and believe me, we worked our heads off to be as efficient as possible. This, these figures are just mind-blowing. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Andy, is there? With that being said, motion for adjournment.
Mr. Williams, Chair.
Second. On favor. Thank you.